I'm so excited to be here. I'm so excited. It feels so hard to say this, like, every day. I'm just, it's been so weird. I've got all three seconds. So, so there. I'm aware. I'm a good friend. 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 You're next. Shh. I'm not. I'm not. I'm not. Do you bring your words? I mean, I'm tired. She turned her green just over the top. I see. Yeah. I'm sure that's why. It's outside. I'm not. I was surprised. I'm not. I'm trying. Not her. She's gone. You get them. You have two. I get them. I guess. These are, these are little. They're pretty strong. I tell you. I'll send this. I'm ready. So many. This is why I didn't say what to do. I'm not weird, yes. But yeah. I'm not. It's right. Well, everybody. I don't know. I have to do. I don't know. I'll need to try. Okay. It's how we do this. I don't know. Thank you. I just feel like. I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm glad. All right. All right. Everybody, I should say it. Play.
If you look over here, this is our reading across Chester County. We've got it from one side of the county, so under where the city is, uh, West Wexler. All the way down to Cax Creek over here, and we have basically western part of Penn Street there with the different things. The cards were, uh, each book of Sue Redd. Um, it was a really great time for them to do that. And we also had some guest readers during Dr. Sue's week. Uh, Tommy Kirk came in, he's here. Uh, Sheriff's there. Well, look at there, our, uh, North Sheriff came in and he read. Our, uh, Police Chief Henderson. And then President Shannon, also we have, we had other readers come as well, uh, but wanted to pull in the different people to show the kids how hard reading is and, uh, bring, they really enjoyed those guest readers. Hundred Days of School, which I wish our kids to dress up as an old person for a hundred days of school. Uh, we were, uh, able to receive a reward school, uh, from what the faculty staff relaxed here, uh, and we were very proud of that. We love our baby hanging out front, uh, and we want to continue that, um, as we go through the rest of next year. And today, uh, we had a manager of the week, this Melissa Greenway, she loved that, she wanted to be spotlighted tonight, so we should read it. Uh, the big thing I want to talk about tonight is code. So, um, challenge our kids to do something different this year, and, uh, this helps a little bit more about code right now, or what we're doing here at, uh, Chester.
I was thirteen when I first got access to, uh, a computer. My parents, uh, my parents, I was nineteen, four years old, I was in sixth grade.
I went to college, especially when you were first impressed on, uh, in children of your science.
I wrote a, uh, a round, like, tic-tac-toe. He was pretty young, he had, I think, the first program I wrote at, since, uh, things like, what's your favorite color? Or how old are you?
I first wanted to meet, uh, Denny's Circle, uh, bright square, here on the screen.
The first time I actually got something to come up and say, hello, world, okay, can I meet a computer? Do that, it was just a thought, if I'm learning, I probably can start off as wanting to learn all the computer science, or, or trying to master this discipline, or anything like that, well, just to start off because I want to do this one simple thing, I want to basically learn this model for myself, and my sisters, or work this little room, and basically just add a little to it, that kind of, controlling something new, we bulked it up, the telephone paper, or the internet, and add a little bit to it, it's really not like, like, that you have something that you're appropriate, you know, things for. It's sort of like, very intimidating, but you kind of hang it on time. Probably it is something that can be learned. And, um, finally, we can be intimidating, a lot of things are intimidating, but, uh, you know, what isn't, a lot of the good people use, it's actually fairly simple. Uh, it's, it's more about the process of breaking down problems than, uh, you know, sort of coming up with, to cover it down, it's just people to share, they do that.
You don't have to be a genius to know like, uh, you know, you can be intelligent.
They share this fraction, and, um, that, that's another, you probably know, communication channels.
You don't have to be a genius, you just have to have an engineer to be.
Even if you're in Congress, or, uh, or play baseball, um, or, uh, you know, build a house, and, and all of these things have been turned around once before.
What it is, is you can, you can, it's like, work everywhere, you want to work in agriculture, do you want to work in entertainment, do you want your family to be into manufacturing, it's, it's just all the work.
Here we are, two thousand thirty. Uh, hang on, take that. To be, to be, inspiration. And none of us will not have a green red card.
When I was in school, I was in this practice group, we'd get this band, and people found out there's no half that, and, you know, it's, they're not like, no, okay, I can make this cool, and, you know, learn a lot, and some of our first jobs. That policy is literally not higher than the many talented engineers that are coming. The whole limit of the system is just that they're just barring enough people who are trained and have the skills to do it. Getting very good people, we try to make it, um, it's as awesome as possible.
Fantastic job.
Pretty cool.
Very successful, yeah.
Pretty wonderful. Just that, he puts a play, we really like to see it. There's always even interesting things, uh, it's a place where people play, relax, uh, with a thing, or play things that are really creative. Or they're trying to make a lot of money, or they're just going to change the world, and they're really incredibly helpless needs to learn.
I think if someone could tell me that self-awareness really about humanity, it's really about helping people by using computers and matching, it would have changed my outlook on it earlier.
To people to actually come up with the idea and then see it in your hands, and then be able to press about it, and that would be millions of people's hands, and, uh, I think we're the first generation in the world that's really ever had that kind of experience. Just, uh, think that if you can start something near college or early, and you can have a set of people that built a big company before, together, build something that a billion people uses, and their data lives, this is crazy, they, it's really, it's amazing. The programmers of tomorrow are the wizards of the future. Maybe you're going to look like you're not matching how it's compared to everybody else. It's me, it's, yeah, it's the closest thing we have to us. Great programs, hundreds of games. Thank you.
So, I challenged our kids this year to use one of our dedicated computer lab days to just work on code. Uh, at the beginning of the year, uh, it was kind of slow, uh, as, as the guy said on the video, it is hard to ask considerations to the kids, and they are really surprised. Uh, so these are kind of our staffs right now, what we've done so far. So two of our kindergarten have passed at least one course, it's called the Pre-Reader Express. It's basically grades eight to three, and it's supposed to take a month. Uh, kindergarten has just kind of finished that, uh, two of these guys, uh, in the last several days, so it's taken them quite a while, but, again, one day a week, uh, our computer lab time is what we have dedicated from now. First grade, we have fourteen, our first graders have passed at least one course, and then we have two that have passed, uh, four courses, and as you can see, the first graders are also doing second and third grade work, and, uh, it's for rate. Second grade, twenty-five or twenty-nine kids have passed at least one course, we have two that have passed three. Again, this is second grade, and they're working on third, fourth grade, uh, level. Third grade, very prosperous, twenty-eight of our thirty kids have passed at least one course, and as you can see, um, they're getting into some of the harder courses. Um, we have four that have passed six courses. This one, uh, is a self-paced intro to games lab, it's for six through twelve graders, and we've had four of our third graders that have passed that. Three of them are almost done completing their eighth course, which is a high school level course. Self-paced intro to turtle programming and HAP, it's supposed to take a month. Um, they are really almost, I'm looking at them, they're going to be paying for it in the school year, but it has been awesome, and, and it's so cool when you go and you take the certificate into the class, because the whole class is celebrating. Um, they're so excited that somebody has passed that, um, and then they're very competitive as well, and they really want to try to outwork, uh, the other kids. And so, we're very proud out here in Cax Creek. Uh, like I said, it was something that I challenged them, and they have really taken to the challenge. And so, uh, that's all I have about Cax Creek this year. Thank you.
Uh, next, we have, uh, opportunity for you to vote for the campaign, we can do that, that we have tonight, this is about your, you know, to address anything that people are, or is supporting. Sorry, about the same to the others, first is a recommendation, and more approval for the works around, and twenty-four, twenty-four, five, ten, or whatever it's mentioned, you know, in terms of order, for information.
Well, fortunately for me, Space and Pete is also here to answer the more intel question we have. Do you have a, a budget proposal in your pack? Uh, you do have, you want, it's a, uh, light, uh, purple colored, um, package that includes the exit, or the plans for, again, as the breakdown of the first page shows, the overall changes with certified, classified, and cert, the, uh, including the supplemental call being proposed, the increase in increase from previous years. Also, the, the tariff rates, the, um, TCRS rates, the teachers are fixed by the state, uh, but the classified staff is fixed by our county, and those rates were included. And as you see there, with the expectations for what will possibly increase with our health insurance, right now, that budget increase is at eight percent. Then, more details are included below that, and to that, the questions, uh, I would refer to the CFO.
This will be the first time for, uh, president, uh, so this will be the first time in possible. For our questions, there are emotions, completely without intention in the first time, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-two, five. Our motion to debate the second, any further questions or discussion? For that, I'll also play with this purpose, uh, if you vote. Uh, the next hour, there's a regulation for the board to adopt, a review of twenty-four thousand, uh, strategic plans, which is something that you work on basically, with the, uh, additional system, and technical management, and staff, so, before we, before we go down that, you remember back earlier, uh, last month, in mid-April, uh, big week, uh, we had a chance to revisit our strategic plan, this linked strategic plan, it was difficult to monitor, causing a length, a lot of, uh, objectives and strategies to improve. Uh, with the leadership of Dr. Person of TSBA, as the executive director, I, I felt very comfortable that we had to find that down to what we consider significant portions that we can all quickly grab into, and, uh, from, from that fork gun in mid-April, that's where we developed a vision, which is each student each level, that's the part of, we're not talking about them just collectively whole, we're talking about each student and vision, to ensure that all are safe, not just collectively, but all students, and all of the specific individual needs, uh, are being addressed, uh, each student is that, and then our mission, uh, was to inspire the students to reach, re, reach kids for their, uh, full potential. And then from that, again, call, we develop a green, lean, inclusive system, for the public, our, uh, students are on prior, uh, positive school culture is essential for learning, and the verb is that education's partnership, students that is that, and, and and, as I shared with the board of general, that we, as you see also, with the, uh, local of the culture, that we include those five attributes, and apply those five attributes to what we believe represented of those three beliefs, not to restate what you already agreed, but that was the purpose of that, to begin to show that in working, and then the community involved, and the summer, and it's early involved, was to build a fascination with what our community back, and it's a senior, and our students, and, uh, last year for our student school. And, uh, then, from those beliefs, we came up with objectives and strategies that we can, uh, based on the goals of the state. Three goals are focus on our students, invest in our people, and part of the first thing that's, uh, that we're addressing, and then all the times, and we're coaching those. So, in part, for our state, or our state, it's all about focus on our students, and then we invest in our, the problem that our staff, as we improve their performance, as we focus on providing them what they need, their professional growth, that will be a win-win situation, students benefit, or our staff benefit. And then finally, the third part of the stakeholders, as you see, by, in the, the tax, the, the reading, and, 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 and,[1126.12]
Any questions about the way that this year, uh, she and I, we've been sharing. Again, it's impressive for our package. There are only a percentage of the justifications come out of it. But there's some justification people didn't afford or that was the thing that they did. They didn't ask, you know, so here they probably need to have this role to their head. And it's much not to be viewed or great. And we noticed from this, uh, in the BCPA, this is a certification certified, uh, payment and this role initially will be more time status. You see the job description, this was Robert, the owner, the chief, uh, Ms. Parker and others had probably waited. But, uh, the purpose of the job, the responsibilities, of course, would be to target this job. And, uh, again, we see right now, this role, we may consider initially as part time, but it could go to a full time status. The role, the board considers it as a part time, consider this role, uh, to, uh, prove this, uh, job description. That'd be working for the firm. Ms. Parker would serve as a meeting supervisor. This would be a district landlord.
Any other questions? Is there motion to approve this special thing? Or sort about the payment?
My question is to approve the sort about the payment.
Okay. Those of the ladies said, any other special request? Okay, a couple of others have said, yeah, the input is, what is this? The next example is an annual agreement, very efficient and forward to just, uh, the school facility, all the ways, uh, we've had a recent conversation with the community about considerations and highlights. Can I sort first, uh, more of a decision? Well, and, and in your agenda on line 10, more conversation than I had prior development in this agenda, uh, one from Mr. Lake Thomas and, uh, Mr. Lake Tom, uh, two different situations that occur. But again, uh, it addresses the rental, uh, rental agreements between rental fees for, uh, our school facilities, not just Williams, uh, more active with all of our, uh, facilities. Uh, the first one that Ms. Thomas brought to my attention was that there was a pending one that was going to rent the gym, which again, you've got, uh, two different, you've got a rental agreement, uh, cost breakdown, uh, that's in your package that I provided in one of the briefs, the issue that draft, uh, which was one that was developed after the acquisition outside of the package. But the initial one beginning with rent of the gym, middle school and $60 apartment. And the individual who rented it for a future event, we had been informed that, uh, the plan is to, uh, charge other vendors to, uh, join in with that individual and end up for him being a core project of the business. Now, we've talked about nonprofit versus profit, but Williams Autocor, that's been the only consideration. Cause at that time, we really thought Williams would be the only consideration for that. But now we're seeing that there's a possibility that that can include all of us. Likely not a classroom, but it could be any gym, cafeteria and stuff like that where sports play could be where there could be, uh, others making revenue off of a very reasonable or some may say cheap rental fee. So I provided a draft for you to consider that could address that. And the draft that I provided just initially establishes all those grant dates when you compare with this, with the examples in fact, it just doubles each one. So it addresses that and then you notice the asterisks, the double asterisk that you see, that that is representing for nonprofits. So if somebody is coming in as a nonprofit, just wanting to use it for a rental purpose, just to have the facility with all of the science, the ability and location, then as it says, nonprofits would be, of the Williams would be considered higher rates or a big percent off, which would restore that where the original package fees would be. Does that make sense what I'm saying? Yes. Does anybody have a question about that one? I mean, that was, that's addressing those, so, you know, pending more approval, what will happen is when Ms. Carroll, who has engaged first in the conversation with the grant, then she will be providing them this copy and then where we will have to ensure, because now the, the responsibility really falls on us to determine whether it's a profit or not profit. Now, it falls on the person that's choosing the grant, because they're going to probably establish that a date, a non-profit. So I would fall by about half rate, which can go back to our revenue charges. That makes sense?
Any questions about that portion?
Okay, for, for the chamber now, we have, you see on the blank, Popper is the executive director of the chamber. And their program is usually, for example, the Hall of Fame and Cheryl. And also their country Christmas production play did, uh, I know for, for the specifics that all the funding that was generated, all the revenue generated from that country Christmas show was going to, uh, offset the public imagination, uh, station down this library with the dollar park and kids, you know, everything contributes to that. And our chamber chooses to be the one person or I say organization responsible for funding that, where everybody below the age of five gets a monthly, uh, child support for the improvement of literacy. Blake and Herb's lead, because before Blake, when Emily Johnson was executive director, she had requested that for any event that Williams Autocor, just to help provide more opportunity for people to engage with the chamber, that the chamber location would be a place that Q and A's could be regarding like ticket sales, opportunities, events in the community. And it becomes such a, a part of that, the people began to think that the chamber was sponsoring everything. So what Blake was asking, you said in the agenda, he was asking just for initial group, uh, cheaper rental fee, which is right now based on your, uh, fee, right now it's 250, uh, per day, or per day, per, uh, rental fee, um, for the Williams Autocor. Now, on, on the draft exactly, we, it has been reduced, that is one option. But now I can say what, what we have also proposed for the chamber specifically, not the general, but for the chamber specifically, because I would have to say this, the chamber has been a parent of the school district to inside our, for economic development, for economic development. I have served on the chamber board since I've been superintendent. There's been no charge for the district to be a part of those conversations. They have been very much the partner with Chester County Schools to ensure that future job markets, future occupations in our local community are situated. They were very much involved, Lake Woods, involved with our portrait of an evil. Uh, there's been a lot of these examples where partnerships grown and supported each other in our efforts to continue to drive up the econ- economic development of the location. So same here, for the chamber specifically, one option that could be considered is that for chamber events such as the two other stripe, the Hall of Fame and then the country Christmas, which are all things, that instead of them charged, they rent a fee of $250, that we have an in-kind, uh, memorandum agreement that they would, for the offset of that charge, they'd be responsible for advertising Chester County Schools, featuring us in their publications, featuring us on their website. That's been a proposed draft and I had shared that with Lance to give his feedback, but that is a proposal that I think gets consideration from the board. So it'd be like, like an MOU, it's not a, you know, it's not an official contract, but it is an agreement just with the chamber, not just the general, but with them specifically the cost of partnership we have with the chamber.
Any questions about, about that? Or comments? All right, it's not those specific in general, just, uh, as we look at the recommendations with just, uh, the experience, any questions or comments about the rental grants?
Do these cover any costs on the same?
They cover some costs, a lot of utilities. But now this is not all of those, this is not cleaning house, that's an admission. Yeah, that's an admission.
But some of the rest of the facility, they pay, they spend, they pay, they pay over, nothing happens, uh, right?
And, and if a lot of friends have cafeteria facilities and they're serving a meal, they need use of our facilities for their preparation area or serving, they have to pay for cafeteria schedule for an hourly rate. So all of those are initial charges sometimes. This is just the remaining, that's, that's even charged in the company.
On the original agreement, where it says other, uh, uh, they, 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 they drive, that, on the, on the draft, it doesn't show the details. So is that the overall situation?
Yeah.
The ticket sales never really manifested yet, you know? The possibility that the, that is, we're talking about part-time ticket sales. You know, unfortunately, some of the areas have high times and that's a bit of a issue. You know, I know that there's some of that huge, small life ticket sales that you can authorize or something, but, you know, we're, this is Carol, Carol's got another job that's going forward and manages to do this. So we're pending a lot of the person providing this grant and having some possible for certain sitting job ticket sales. What you see on the board, like the first one, Williams Autocor, based on things, there is a thousand, uh, a thousand, or perhaps maybe a thousand dollars. And just before we, uh, uh, this year, we are back to seeing this one, it's a lot of 15,000. And, uh, that is not, still stat, but, you know, it's not, you know, it's, thank you rest of the state, uh, you guys, uh, you have, uh, I'm, I'm thinking that there are two, uh, also.
Thanks for providing some data on Truski's office, I can't remember if it's two most recent months, March or April. But you know, our, our school district earns, receives, uh, we receive, uh, well, half of a sales tax revenue coming back, the additional 2.75, we get half of that coming back, uh, for March, uh, was 186,000 that we received from the, from sales tax. Now, I'm not saying it was always on rental fees, but it's a combination of rental fees, restaurant purchases, all the purchases made in the county seat for the month of April, it was over 200,000. So our school district has benefited from that, such as things that we've been able to enjoy like even right now, which, you know, chamber books, packages for the last two years, getting there about a hundred dollars a piece. Those opportunities are great to us, above and beyond salary commitments, above and beyond the other costs that we have to run the school district. We're able to do those things because we generated revenue across that.
It didn't hurt to play all this on the, on the.
It doesn't hurt at all.
Well, that's, we have 18, 18 months already for the rest of the year, not including the Hall, uh, Carl Burrows benefit, this, uh, school funding, has beds on the calendar, uh, all the things that are traditional, these are not traditional to bring in, people, just this year, uh, and maybe that's just using the rental revenue to reinvest, that's a very wide, bringing in equipment we need to bring in these events, uh, so we're kind of one stop shop. And, uh, that, that's our, our, we have more roof, it's not protected, they have all the spot lots, in the past, they left it in the spot lot. Uh, so these are being, the money that comes in to reinvest, it's a tactic that you really have to, I mean, that's one thing to be clear, there is no risk to any tax higher money, that schools and techs will only do, it takes 400% profit loss on the curve. Any questions before we go? There comes. All right, is there an emotional support, the adjustments that have been presented in your draft?
Well, no, it's not, I just shared that as an option. If we go with what the draft that provides is not, the only major adjustment is all of them for a lower price, if they provide that as a nonprofit, then it will go back to the reasonable cost. And then if you notice specifically a nonprofit, for Williams Autocor, it's used from 250 down to 200. So that's, those are the differences that are, that are included in the draft. So if you do accept the draft or replace the current model, that would be the, the changes that would be realized.
Just wanted to know.
What do you say?
So Claire found a place, what would just go be the draft, and there really are special ones. Not all of those would be approved in the draft, let's present this, they are. Any others? Wow, they want to prove, is this something we'll use in the draft?
Yes, yes.
So we'll be wanting to see if I have ever even looked at the statement.
And he may choose to put the board or the chamber, may. Well, and again, I, 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 I continue, repeat testimony, the partner showed that our school district has done and continues to do, with the chamber, has been very beneficial, not only helping, even with connection Heather Redd, who is a member of the chamber board, very active in our development, economic development, very active in rolling, pulling kids into, to work-based learning events, law and metal, and then not only that, that short term, but following up since I'm hiring you there. So there's been some positive, life-changing career paths that our kids have had the benefit from with just, and that's just one small example of those, uh, the benefit being with the chamber, being the goals who are the leaders in our community, to make sure that we are really invested just in what we have to offer and what we can essentially.
All right, thanks. With that being said, we'll be going to our next topic, which is, uh, and since it's drawn, so we've got some incentives to give out to the school educators, and we just thank you, and I wish I should make a survey and, uh, just, we have certainly, uh, for the, hey, again, the great thing about chamber books, by local, is sales tax revenue stays local that we come back with, so. And I would say that with the utility of the chamber books through the years, I know from all the feedback that obviously the staff has talked to me about, they like the chamber books than any other, you know, that has been provided in the facts. We do it multiple times for the day, or dear excuse me, during the school year. And I know from the chamber's perspective, they really like our business, because we are the leading, uh, purchaser of the chamber books. Now, uh, anyway, so, it's another positive.
I do have, let me say just a real quick thing, the last several years, Chester County Schools has really invested in this, in the perception survey, they've been doing this for a number of years, right now have, the first thing is to warn managers, the, the evaluation, the surveys. If your school district reaches a quota of 40% or higher with, uh, response rate, we get data back from the state that they all process for, so they disseminate that and inform us. As you see here by our numbers, all of our schools are well above that purchase amount in fact. Uh, two of the schools, Jack's Creek Elementary included, was 100% participation, so was Chester Middle School, 100% participation. In the state, we were number three in the state as far as school districts, of the 146 school districts, we're number three overall with participation rate. For our administrators, this is a separate, uh, survey to do, they were number one in the state, uh, with participation, we had our, so, I kind of imagine that is breaking back to normal thing, is being able to look at your data and these just add to the conversation that we have in the summer, when I meet with each one of the administrators individually for the summits and meetings evaluations, that we bring up the data from their educators and for them to see how we can go to a superficial line for the educators. It's a whole, uh, there's a several variety of questions being asked, but it's good data and our state does, uh, to give incentive, the incentive is in, uh, in their part is that one school district reaching certain percentage will be in their top graph for drawing for extra funds. Uh, we've been unfortunate there, we have been top prime the last several years, so this becomes, it becomes a very viable and useful and frequently used to a data that we can get. So the incentive is if you get not even a cent or higher over staff, then you're going to be included in the drawing for, and it's a team, 20. So we're gonna, we're gonna draw, I'm 184, we've got 184 names, this represents five or six school districts, or five or six schools in our district. And, uh, I've got a random sort of order generator here, and I wish it would be on the big screen, we're back in the office, so I'm gonna have Shannon to read the number, I'm gonna just push the button, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have division of level, make sure everybody's legitimate C R, uh, set a, here we go. How many, I need somebody to have, how many? So we don't do 20.
Are you ready? 114. Anything else? Okay, number two. 101. 112. Josh Moore. Four. 182. 184. 164. Chad Harris. Winner, winner, winner two, they call it. I said that was five. Six. 158. Seven. You want, you want to be first? That would be 72. Uh, Tish Poples. 61. Chad Harris. Nine. 36. Nancy Texas. Seven. 73. Jerry Hubbard. One. 105. Colin Pearson. Twelve. 26. Brandon White. 13. 167. Water Loss. 93. Water Mower. Is there any back in text? Okay, that's four. This is 15. Number 22. Missy Kelly. 16. 175. Water. Seven, or 18? 70. 78. Andrew Johnson. Number 12. Nathan Black. 19. Number 78. 183. Water Loss. And then 20. 62. So we'll provide down there both chamber boards, $50, $50. Oh, the bottom thing we have tonight, we have nothing to say to the board, if there's a chance for, uh, one thing to be done.
Well, I can speak of one thing that I heard myself, uh, our construction manager, John Law, uh, was informing me today that he was unable to make the board any person I, uh, was a family committee. So I informed him that we were meeting United States, um, but he did provide me a brief summary that I can share with you folks for the Ag and Olo building plus the multi-person facility. This was his statement, he said, we are just a couple of days or so from completing the earthwork of the Ag and Olo shop. The weather is not cooperating with us, obviously that's pretty clear, about the time it dries enough, uh, out to work, right again, uh, but he said that we are waiting on the pre-engineering building approval drawings, which are, which are expected by the end of this month, so we can release the reinforcing steel submittals for renewal approval. Once they're released and fabricated, as he said, we're off the races with concrete foundations and the materials. He did say that in addition, we are anticipating information returning to date for the multi-purpose facility, pre-engineered building approval drawings. Once we know this information, we can better gauge when we will begin the earthwork from that time. So that was his statement.
Do you guys have a question? Do you have any questions by the way? Thank you.
Well, I, I would say that next month, we are about to make, uh, options for the 24, 25 calendar for our board meetings, both will make these due on Tuesday nights. If that's a possibility, uh, I'll share the reason, uh, that with the next, uh, board agenda, Tuesday nights instead of Thursday. Of course, we had about a third of them already, with reschedule Tuesday nights, completely missed.
Anybody else to come? And Doc, I want to share that our next meeting is due the 13th, that we've got to have the information to come for sure, and that being said, that is being tomorrow too.